Apologize about that, Mr. Sacks. You have cards on Items 19 through 27 in general public comment. Why don't we start with these three minutes for Items and then we'll move into public comment?
Okay, you want to start with my three minutes on the items I held?
Yes, please.
Well, I'm concerned about Item 19. I'm still wondering why the Affordable Care Act isn't used to help the homeless people. It's still a viable option. It's still available in the county of Los Angeles. It's on their agenda as an item open for discussion and it's being held. And I'm concerned because of the $640 million that was taken out of the city of Los Angeles and the county and used to build the stadium in Las Vegas and nobody stood up and said anything about that money being used. It could have been used to house almost 30,000 homeless people. And we've got more homeless people all over the city of Los Angeles. It's become a real sewer. You need to get out and walk around this city and see how crappy it looks with all the homeless people around.
I'm a bit confused as to what item...
I'm concerned about Item 20 with this REAP program. And I don't know why the city doesn't invest in using MICLA funds. Those are municipal issued City of Los Angeles funds that could be used in place of running people out of their homes or charging them stupid money. They could get involved with the landlords and upgrade the units while the people are just get a minimum amount of rent increase and they could stay in their homes. I'm concerned. Number 23 mentions something about homeless. And I'm wondering what's the difference between homeless and homelessness? It's the perception that you need to look at. It's focusing on the problem and not sweeping under the rug. I'm concerned about number 25. It mentions they were giving money to the U.S. Bank, but it's U period S period and there is no bank U period S period. It's U.S. Bank. And it's the logos that are important. And it's time to look at some of the things you see on TV and look at the logos for some of these things and you'll notice they're kind of phony logos. It's about the internet and how it's being driven by one person. I'm concerned about pro housing. They mentioned pro housing in one of these items and I don't know what pro housing is about. I'm concerned about the waiting list for... God damn. I can't think of the word. I'm concerned about all the 27 items. You only have two neighborhood councils with any input. And that's getting to be a standard procedure for the city council. Why isn't there more neighborhood input on some of these items?
You can go on to your general, Mr. Sacks.
Okay. On my general public comment, I'm just going to list a whole bunch of things and you can do whatever you want with them. You could thrust them and you could shove them if you want to. I'm concerned. I've got this newspaper article about licensing that people are testing positive for the coronavirus, but they're dying from COVID. So why are they tracking coronavirus when they're dying from COVID? What the fuck is going on? I'm concerned about the L.A. Arena Land Company. Does anybody know what that is? I know what that is. I'm concerned about Metro. There's different Metro. There's a Metro Corporation and there's a Metro Association. And I'm concerned about the Crenshaw Construction Company building the Aqua Line. And who's building the Crenshaw Line? I'm concerned about Mars Bioscience and how that's become a county investment and what the hell is Mars Bioscience about?
Thank you.
And I'm concerned. I'd like to have...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Next speaker is Marif. Anyone here by that name, Marif? Seeing none? Next speaker is Richie St. Jenko. You filled out a card for general public comment in Item number 19.
I think it was for general public comment 1, 19 and 20, please.
One has... Comment has been satisfied, so the only items you can speak on is 19, 20's been continued and general public comment.
Okay, so 19 and...
You can talk about number one during general if you wish, so let's give you a minute for number 19 and then you can go on to general.
Thank you, Stephen. So this is related to the resolution pushed by Coretts and Buscaino. It's obviously these two are pushing forward this motion because they both hate unhoused people. They're attempting to make public property... They're attempting to make it illegal to be poor on public property. You know, "We oppose these 4118 motions in these zones that would make it illegal for the unhoused to sit, sleep, and lie in the designated sites. Criminalization is an inhumane, costly, and ineffective response to homelessness. Even if shelters offered, the city has shelter beds for only 39% of the unhoused population." So you're sweeping them away from these sites, Paul. You know, the other day when I saw you, I felt bad for being mean to you because you're so frail, but then I saw your consultants put something out about the youth.
Can we stick on the item?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I'll go to... I'll go to general public comment. You know, these motions were born out... These 4118 motions were born out of failed mayoral campaigns. Joey 1% buckets couldn't even get 1% in the general election. Mike Fier, the city attorney who drafted the 4118, he dropped out before Election Day. These inhumane policies are being pushed by people like Kevin De Leon. Kevin, you thought you were going to be senator one day? That didn't happen. You thought you were going to be mayor one day, Kevin? That didn't happen. You're running for lieutenant governor in 2026, Kevin? That's not going to happen. You're fucking losing your shit, dude. You're putting your hands on activists and one day you're going to approach someone in the wrong way. You're going to approach the wrong person, Kevin, and they're going to let your coke head ass up. We know about the strippers you put your hands on, Kevin. Your dirty secrets from Sacramento are coming out, bro. And put your hands on me again and see what happens.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dylan. You're speaking on general public comment in Item number 19.
19?
Yeah, start with Item 19, please.
It is deeply inhumane to sweep people around the city instead of dealing with the root cause of the problem. The root cause is that they don't have housing, they don't have services, and that money you're spending on sweeping people could literally be spent on services and housing to actually solve the problem. But we know why you all don't solve the problem is because it's more flashy to sweep unhoused people around the city. And it's a shame on all of you. And I guess the rest of my time I'll get into public comment or general public comment. For my general public comment, I just came to once again ask Paul Coretts why he has not returned money from serial killer Ed Buck.
Next speaker.
I yield the rest of my time.
Next speaker is Ellie. Ellie, are you here? You filled out a card for general public comment in Item number 19.
I'd like to speak on all available items, please.
That's the... You only filled out two cards?
What's that?
General public comment and Item 19 is the cards you filled out. So you can start with... You can start with Item 19.
Can I add another one?
No. Go ahead and speak on Item 19 and then you can have your minute of general public comment. Go ahead, begin.
I usually say good morning when I come in and give a public comment, but fuck that. This is not a good morning. My name is Elia Rochino, was born and raised in City 5. That's right, Coretts. You represent me.
Can you address the chair or the whole council? We can't hear you.
Counsel, answer a question for me. How do you all sleep at night? I myself have sometimes trouble sleeping thinking of what my neighbors are forced to go through, but how do you guys sleep knowing that you have blood on your hands? As time goes on, I am more and more blown away by how much the city council has accomplished. Seriously, it's insane the progress you've made with criminalizing unhoused people. If only you guys had that same speed, determination, and passion to provide actual housing and services for unhoused people. When you guys passed 4118 last summer, I honestly could not think you guys could get more heartless. But every week, I am more and more disgusted by this group of ghouls, especially you, Paul. You're proposing to enforce 4118 on Blackburn and La Saniga. For those of you unfamiliar, that is right across the street from the Beverly Center. It is so fucking clear that you are prioritizing the rich and privileged over the impoverished.
And you can go on to general. Go ahead.
Over the impoverished and disadvantaged. It's because of relying on your pockets, huh? Howard Sunken and everyone else. I didn't forget about the illegal LADWT fundraiser, by the way. Oh, did you return the money from Ed Buck yet? Criminalizing unhoused people isn't going to do shit done except to displace and further traumatize and destabilize them, keeping them on the streets for longer. You do realize that 4118 just makes you so worse? Surely you're not that stupid. Displacement also especially harms neighbors who are sick or disabled. You don't actually give a shit about unhoused people, you just don't want to see them. Unhoused people are people too, and you all seem to forget that. On average, five unhoused people die every day in Los Angeles. That is because of you. Are y'all really going to try to make unhoused people owning bikes illegal as if 4118 was not enough? Money unhoused Angelenos rely on bike repair for a living. Additionally, how are unhoused people supposed to get around, especially when you're enforcing 4118 sweeps on encampments? Cars are expensive, Metro is not free. What other options are there if not for a bike?
Thank you.
Even if you don't see them, unhoused people still...
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Thank you, Speaker. The next speaker is Kayon. Is there anybody here with that name? Can't see none. Next speaker is Ray. You filled out cards for general public comment in Item 19.
Yeah, can I start with 19?
Go ahead.
Start with 19, please.
Okay. You have all failed to create adequate shelter and housing options. You failed to create affordable housing. And when it comes to representing our communities, our youth, you know, your constituents, you're all monumental fucking failures. 4118 is cruel. Criminalizing being unhoused when you've done nothing to provide any meaningful services or options, it's not only counterintuitive, it's exceptionally cruel. And you all have blood on your hands. Like Ellie said, five unhoused people die every single day on the streets and that is all your fault. And the fact that you have the audacity to continue to push for more 4118 just shows that you don't care about us. You care about your fucking money. You care about lining your pockets and it's unacceptable. You want to sweep unhoused people away because you think that if you don't see them, they don't exist anymore. Well, you have blood on your hands. I have no idea how you sleep at night. I have no idea how you have children or friends or family that know what you do and don't hold you accountable. I don't fucking understand. Vote no, it's absurd.
You can go on to general now.
General comment. I think I said most of what I have to say, but general comment, fuck it. Sidio, your staffers were intimidating and blatantly breaking the laws at vote centers on June 7th. Yeah, that's all. Vote no on 19, 20. Yeah, fuck you guys.
You signed up to speak on Item 19.
Yes.
Go ahead.
If you proceed with enforcing locations under 4118, then you are contributing to breaking the bonds of community and outreach which people living on the street cope with their situation. You are separating them from outreach workers and friends such as myself and many others who are listening that provide them with access to various forms of support, food, medicine, and harm reduction resources. You are contributing to the isolation, abandonment, and stigmatization of our city's most vulnerable people who have histories of trauma, violence, and layers of disadvantage. Municipal codes that restrict where a person can legally exist or exist at all are unconstitutional and a violation of Eighth Amendment rights. Every cop, every fucking sanitation worker, every fucking council member, every low-level politician who sits silently and ables these laws is guilty of conspiracy. Not only is everything you're doing unconstitutional, but it's morally bankrupt. The city is trying to legislate unhoused people into insanity, substance use, and prison because you want them to disappear.
The next speaker is Dr. Truthbey. You fill out a card for general public comment.
I actually signed up for all items. I asked multiple items.
The only ones that I showed... Which are the other items?
23, 12, 14, 19.
12 has already been voted on? Item number 12 has already been voted on?
Okay, so basically...
You can speak on it in general public comment if you wish.
Okay, well, I have two other agendas.
So you have...
Agenda number...
You only filled out a card for general public comment. So you were... I saw you back there, you were attempting to fill out a card for what other item?
Okay, I'm sorry. So I do general public comment, but I signed up for the three items. Do I come back later for the other two?
No, 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 I just want to make sure. I saw you back there trying to sign up. Which are the other items you want to sign up for?
Yeah, I was signing up for Bianca Vez, she's signing up. I signed up for Item 21, 23.
Okay, that's fine. So you can go ahead and have your two minutes for your two items and then your general public comment.
Okay.
Start with your two items.
Okay, so briefly, the budget for District 8. We have a transfer of funds totaling $2.7 million specifically for homeless service assistance. You have homeless prevention services, neighborhood service enhancements, council, district, community services. So as we know, District 8 is one of the lowest performing districts out of all 15. And so if this $2.7 million is going to improve it significantly, I would love to see... Where's Harris Dawson? I would love to see greenery sprout out. I'd love to see the liquor stores disappear. I would love to see more youth centers built and especially emergency shelters, which is the number one issue in every district. We request that there are three warehouses in every district to be used as emergency shelter to remove the encampments since this ordinance of making it illegal to sleep in certain areas, we know that's targeting the homeless. So let's be fair about this. They're empty warehouses, you have nonprofit organizations going through the policy of trying to get HMIS, capacity building, simple things that LASHA should be doing, but they're not doing that. So we're asking you directly, please, in your district, specifically in Skid Row, District 15, District 8, and District 9, you have a high rate of meth, crime, homelessness, and the same thing, people need housing. So while they get permanent housing, they got to get temporary shelter. Excuse me. So I'm asking you that you guys work together to let these warehouses be turned into ESGs where a lot of CBDG funding needs to go. Lastly, the EHV vouchers, LASHA said it's going to take six months to go over all of the 30,000 applicants, which it shouldn't be. So let's give an alternative other than the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority that is apparently doing a very, very egregious job. It's too much federal funding being wasted for no reason.
And if you wanted your general, please go ahead.
Do you want your one minute of general public comment? Go ahead.
We want to work with you. We are your constituents. Juneteenth is coming up. It's not just Pride Month, it's not Stop Asian Hate Month. We have to recognize African Americans at not getting the resources that they need. Juneteenth is important because each of you are going to have a day off, federal holiday. But blacks are still, number one incarcerated, blacks are still 56% homeless. Businesses, African-American businesses are not getting the equity. So when is it going to end? So we're asking for this month to turn some of that funding, homeless funding specifically for homeless families, African-American families who are sleeping in their cars, same thing. Once African-Americans are taken care of, you know every other race will be taken care of. So let's call it what it is and stop the racial disparities of what's happening, especially for intelligent African-American service providers who are here to tell you the solution. We don't want to be cut out the table. We just need to help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jamie Phaler. Jamie, are you here? You filled out a card to speak on Item number 19.
Hi, I want to speak on Item number 19. This is for Councilmember Coretts' proposed 41.18 sites, one of which, the new one on Blackburn is 0.1 miles from the Burton Way 41.18 zone that already exists. These residents who are on Blackburn were displaced from Burton Way and not offered any services or support because they were displaced from there and not offered anything. There have been sweeps almost every week. We have... We, as a group, have been present for these. Field deputies have shown up one time after we have emailed and been stonewalled by them several times after being agreed to meet with along with our unhoused neighbor who is subjected to some of these harmful sweeps, one of which was during the loss of pause. However, Coretts, you opted out of pausing sweeps during that time. He himself, and we have on video and sent to your office, was the one who was sweeping the alley while sanitation and cops stood around. I want to read, if I have time, really quickly, just on general public comment, some of the notes I have from people who couldn't attend.
Speaker, your time's running out. Thank you. Next speaker is Kelly Clift. Kelly, are you here? You filled out a card for general public comment.
Yes, I did. Good morning.
Good morning.
A reminder, my father Walter Clift murdered. Number two, I'm a Christian woman and it's very upsetting when people murder, when people steal your money. There's a church called Bread of Life Four Square Church, 5179 Washington Boulevard, zip code 916. Somebody stole my money, settlement money, and gave these people $70,000. I would not give a church $70,000 when I need the money. And off my case number 21STCV06217, Kelly A. Clift versus Los Angeles District Attorney's Office, Jane V. Billick is the attorney. It's coming from city attorney Mike Fier. Just to want you... Just to let people know, people are stealing my settlement money, but I don't get upset as far as going out killing people and cursing you out because I don't want you to take it out on your family. And that's in my lawsuit, police officers abusing their families.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, June 15th. I'm Nury Martinez, the president of the city council. Madam clerk, please call the roll. Blumenfeld?
Blumenfeld, present.
Bonin?
Here.
Buscaino? Sidio?
Present.
De Leon? Absent. Harris Dawson? Absent. Coretts? Absent. Krikorian?
Here.
Lee?
Present.
Martinez? Present. O'Farrell?
Present.
Price?
Here.
Ramen?
Here.
Rodriguez? Absent. Wesson?
Here.
11 members present in a coram, Madam President. For a starter of business?
Approval of the minutes of June 14th, 2022.
Mr. Sidio moves and Mr. Price seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Wesson moves and Mr. Bonin seconds next.
Items 1 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Arts, Parks, Health, Education, and Neighborhoods Committee report has been submitted for Item 12 and posted to council file number 22-0081. Items 15 through 26 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us, members. You wish to call any of these items special? Can't see no specials. Madam clerk, which are the available items for us to vote on?
Madam President, there are cards on Items 15 through 26. In that case, the council may now vote on Items 1 through 14.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on Items 1 through 14. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Buscaino?
Could register a no vote on 14. I don't think it impacts the outcome.
Okay, registered Mr. Buscaino as a no vote on Item 14. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That will be 10 ayes and 1 no for Item 14. The item is adopted.
Thank you.
Madam President, will we send Item 14 forthwith, please?
There's been a request by Mr. Bonin to send Item 14 forthwith. Without objection, that will be the order. Okay, let me move on to public comment. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, I would like to make a verbal motion before we take public comment.
Okay.
On Items 26. I move that we adopt the city clerk's recommendation and the election ordinance and ballot resolutions to place this initiative on the November 8th ballot of 2022. Can I get a second? Second by Mr. Sidio, thank you. Okay, let's go move on to public comment. Mr. Arnold Sacks? Oh, it's before that. Excuse me, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Bonin?
My... .............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I remember coming in here a couple of years ago, asking why they weren't using any of the state excise tax to help balance the budget. Never got an answer. I understand they're going to look for some outhouse counsel versus in-house counsel. By the way, do you know the difference between a mosquito and a lawyer? One's a blood-sucking insect, the other's a parasite. Number eighteen refers to the planning department. There's no agendas posted for the planning department downstairs. So are they meeting? And if they're not meeting, I know they're getting some of these plans out of a six-dollar magazine that they get out of the planning, the building right around the corner, because I've seen it. Number fifteen, transit-oriented communities. What does that mean, transit-oriented? When are they going to start looking into SEQA? Do you want, do you care about clean air, or are you only concerned about tearing down buildings? Do you care about the clean air? Do you want to do something about cleaning up the environment? Or forty units, four units for fifty-five years old, for fifty-five years? I don't think that's going to make it. Nineteen refers to the L.A. Housing Department contracting with the L.A. Homeless Services. Why do you contract out services for the Los Angeles City Housing Department to the county? Why do you do that? And what's the difference between a homeless servness and homelessness service? There's a, there's a couple of differences there. Number twenty refers to the Board of Transportation Commission. Who do they oversee? Do they hire for MV Transit? Do they hire for First Transit? Are they in charge of Los Angeles Department of Taxis, Ladot, or Dash? There's five different transportation commissions. I'm concerned about twenty, nineteen, twenty-six. Instead of a tax, why don't you issue MICLA funds? MICLA bonds? You would just be able to connect, there'd be no excise tax. Why you keep taxing people to death? Is there already a ten percent sales tax? Why don't you issue MICLA funds? MICLA bonds? Municipal issued City of Los Angeles bond? You could work with landlords and tenants, and there would be no cost to the public. It would just be an individual thing, and you'd be able to get rid of the RICO stuff that they talk about. What else we got here? Fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-six? Oop, time's up.
You can go into general.
Your time is up, so why don't we move into general public comment? Go ahead and give them a minute.
Okay, do you care about the planes that are flying over downtown L.A.? There's almost fifty planes every day that are flying over downtown L.A. because some jackass built a goddamn stadium in a flight path and didn't ask, no planning. How could you not talk to the FAA and say, hey, we're going to build this goddamn stadium in a flight path, and you send those goddamn planes over downtown L.A.? How stupid is that? I'd like to know if you're going to put up a reward for the doctor that was killed at LAC USC. I was a patient there in twenty, twenty twenty, and two weeks after I left, the doctor got killed, and I don't think anything was ever rewarded for his locate the killer. I'd like to know if you're going to do something about that. I'd like to know about code enforcement. Here isn't advertising for a Dollar Tree store right here, but it's selling stuff for a dollar twenty-five. What the fuck is that?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. The next speaker is Stuart Waldman. Stuart, are you here? Stuart, you signed up for item twenty-six and general public comment.
Thank you. Stuart Waldman, President of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association. The documentary Transfer Tax isn't just about a few large homes. It applies to all residential housing, including apartment buildings and pretty much every commercial property in the city of Los Angeles. These new taxes will simply be passed on to renters and businesses. Everyone knows that nearly every small business has a triple net lease. When taxes go up on the property, they all get passed on. Measure HHH, which was simply a bond instead of a tax, has been a failure. One point two billion dollars, and it has created very few housing units, and they cost over eight hundred thousand dollars each to produce. Throwing good money after bad isn't going to solve this problem. Something needs to be done to make these affordable housing units cheaper. These new large taxes cannot be spent on temporary shelter solutions, which is an overwhelming priority for the residents of Los Angeles. Money on the tax will be utilized without council approval.
And you can go into general, you have another-
General comment. Measure will simply waste more money with a system that doesn't work and locks us into one methodology. We, the business community, supported H. We've supported HHH. We want to work with you. As you know, we support affordable housing. We oppose NIMBYism. We want to solve these problems, but we have to be smart about how we spend this money. And this measure doesn't, is not smart about how it is spending the money, because we don't know how it's going to spend the money. So there are problems that need to be fixed, and we are with you on that, just not on this measure. So thank you all. It's good to see you all in person.
It's nice to see you, too. Next speaker is Alec Caboyan. Alec Caboyan. Good morning, Alec. You signed up for general public comment.
Good morning. My name is Alec Caboyan.
Can you bring the microphone a little down so we can hear you?
Okay. My name is Alec Caboyan. I go to Granada Hills Charter High School, and I'm a part of the LEED twelve program under Councilmember John Lee. In this program, I learned a lot about civic engagement issues in Los Angeles, and one in particular that concerned me is public transit. I believe that one way to improve public transit in this city is for Metro to be fair free again, like it was from March twenty twenty to January of twenty twenty-two. During the time when it was free, ridership increased to pre-pandemic levels, giving access to many low-income workers who depend on Metro as their primary means of transportation. Funding should not be an issue, as fares only make up around six percent, if I'm correct, of Metro's revenue. People should have the right to free public transit in order for L.A. to be as inclusive as possible to those from a lower socioeconomic background. Overall, I'd like to thank John Lee, Ron Rubin, and the rest of the LEED twelve group for allowing youth like me, myself, to learn about the ins and outs of the city of Los Angeles and give hope to everyone of a brighter future. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ann Marie Odie. Good morning. You signed up to speak on item twenty-six.
Good morning. This is Ann Marie Odie, speaking on behalf of the one hundred and forty thousand proud, skilled, and hard-working members of the Los Angeles and Orange Counties Building and Construction Trades Council. I'm here strongly to join our strong and wide coalition of labor, developers, nonprofit housing advocates, and community advocates to support United to House L.A. This is a landmark day in which you have officially put us on the ballot. We have collected ninety-eight thousand signatures. We were a widespread and unified effort to help solve the housing crisis in Los Angeles. This is a crisis that is affecting our members, their families, and everyone who lives here. It is a smart and sensible solution that will not cost the average taxpayer in any substantial way, and will instead possibly raise up to one billion dollars per year for the preservation and creation of affordable housing. We are proud to join our coalition. Thank you.
The next speaker is Claudio Bovell. Good morning. You signed up to speak for general public comment.
Good morning. The reason I'm here, to thank the City Council members for all the laws that they put in place to protect the renters and the elderly and so forth. Now, Mr. Herb Weston, I live at the Gloria Homes Apartment Complex. Why are they encouraging the tenants to pay their rent online? That's against the law. Why are they asking for capital improvement? That's against the law. Why are they forcing or asking the tenants to pay for maintenance every now and then? That's also against the law. I have a package for Ms. Martinez. I have a package for Mr. Weston, and I have a copy of all the laws that the City Council has put in place to protect the renters. I would advise you to share the information with the district that you represent, because people have no idea of these things in place to protect them from illegal eviction and so forth. And we have a problem. If you, if you do not control or regulate capital improvement, you're going to have a homeless, elderly, homeless situation, because the elderly's the ones that are getting kicked out of the apartment.
Sergeant, could you?
Sergeant, can you please? This, sir? The sergeant's right over here. Just go ahead and hand him the paperwork, and we'll make sure it gets to the right person.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Frank Martinez. And you signed up to speak in item twenty-six?
Yes. Good morning, Council. My name is Frank Martinez. I am the Policy Director for the Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. Our members build affordable housing, nonprofit affordable housing in Los Angeles and the region. We are here in strong support of United to House L.A. It's estimated that in the first ten years, this will build over twenty-five thousand units of affordable housing that will house almost seventy thousand people. The stability of a permanent source of funding is extremely important for those who build affordable housing. It allows them to plan ahead, to build up their pipeline, and keep that flow of affordable housing coming and make it increase. The affordability crisis and the homelessness crisis in Los Angeles will not go away without us as a society making decisions and commitments to help get there. And this is one of those opportunities to make one of those choices, and we support it very strongly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Giovanni Ferris. Good morning, and you signed up to speak in general public comment.
Good morning. My name is Giovanni Ferris, and I am a recent high school graduate. As I'm venturing off to college in New York City to champion social change and empower myself with education, I want to articulate to you all of the things that have gotten me here, specifically Councilmember John Lee's LEED twelve program. John Lee is amazing in and of himself, and his various accomplishments speak on this. However, he creates an environment in which his constituent accomplishments are not only commemorated, but so rewarded as well, something that at first glance may not be as obvious. As a fall cohort member of John Lee's Youth Leadership Program, LEED twelve, students like me were able to gain connections that could help them further develop their people-serving organizations, like mine, Foster Connections, assisting disadvantaged youth battle systemic poverty. And with these connections, many LEED twelve students received one thousand dollar checks from philanthropists that without John Lee, we would otherwise have not been introduced to. Without LEED twelve and John Lee, I would not be as confident, courageous, or as accomplished as I am today. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Kelly Clift. Anyone here with that name? Oh, good morning. You signed up to speak in general public comment. Go ahead.
Good morning. I would like to remind you, my father Walter Cliff murdered, and case number Michael Moore, Police Chief, case number two-one S T C V three-eight-six-two-five, Stanley Mas Court, Kelly A. Clift versus Los Angeles Police Chief Michael Moore. I just want to remind you that Los Angeles Police Department, I was making complaints about people breaking in, stealing, et cetera, and my father was murdered. Now, I've had settlement money issued, but I've never received the settlement money. Former Police Chief William Bratton was knighted by Queen Elizabeth, and I happened to be in London before he was knighted, a three-week class at the University of London Theatrical Class. I just want to remind you that people are afraid. Michael Moore, Walter R. Cliff, my father murdered, the case cannot be settled out of court. However, I need money. Ku Klux Klan Act of eighteen seventy-one, Civil Rights Act eighteen seventy-one, Klan members sympathizers were powerful enough, the law enforcement would not arrest them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker is Laura Raymond. You signed up to speak in item twenty-six.
Yes, excuse me, yes. Good morning, everyone. My name's Laura Raymond. I'm here in enthusiastic support of item twenty-six. I'm the Director of ACT L.A., a Broad Housing and Transit Coalition, and I'm co-chairing United to House L.A. with April Verrett, the President of SEU twenty fifteen. And I mentioned that just to really drive home the point that this is a community labor alliance that has, one hundred and forty-three organizations so far have joined this. We've gathered ninety-eight thousand signatures to put this onto the ballot today. Our organizations work with renters and workers who are living on the edge of having housing stability, filled with stress and uncertainty. Some of our members are unhoused, even though they're working full-time jobs, unionized jobs, or, you know, are seniors that should be enjoying retirement. In this moment, we need to do something really big. United to House L.A. will be the biggest investment the city has ever made in preventing homelessness, and will provide hundreds of millions a year for affordable housing. This is truly a proposal from the front lines. It was written with input from dozens of community organizations, and this is the opportunity to turn the tide. I'm honored to support today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marissa Garcia. You signed up to speak on item twenty-six.
Good morning. My name is Marissa Garcia, and I'm here on behalf of Move L.A., a nonprofit organization which envisions prosperous and healthy neighborhoods around transit stations. We are in strong support of United to House L.A., a measure which will significantly increase affordable housing for homeless and low-income Angelenos, including housing near transit stops. This is of particular importance for seniors and people with disabilities, many of whom are reliant on transit to access essential services. This measure would also provide income support to at-risk renters, helping them to maintain their stability and to stay in their homes. When our community has enough affordable housing, we will all benefit. So let's work to get the United to House L.A. measure passed in November, because everyone deserves a safe, long-term, and affordable place to live. Thank you.
Next speaker is Olivia Zao. Good morning, Olivia. You signed up to speak in general public comment.
Hi, everyone. My name is Olivia Zao, and I will be a rising sophomore at Granada Hills Charter High School in the fall. I'm part of the LEED twelve program, and firstly, I'd just like to say thank you for inviting us here today, to be here to observe the city and its processes. I believe that it is truly important to get involved in the community, and I've created a few nonprofits to do so, one of which is called Cheer Community Cleanup. And we focus on beautifying our communities through simple and fun ways, such as going around, recycling, and picking up trash. I love how it has mobilized our community, kids, adults, and elders, all alike, and it has allowed us to give back to our community. Although we are just a grassroots organization, I truly believe that everyone can make change in the world, no matter big or small, through the simplest actions, such as the ones we are taking today. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. What an eloquent and poised young woman. Look out, Mr. Lee. Next speaker is Tommy Fahey.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning.
Is it okay if I can specifically speak on items twenty-six?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Madam President and Councilmembers. My name is Tommy Fahey, and I'm here on behalf of twelve thousand members of the IBW Local Eleven, the Electricians Union. IBW Local Eleven has been involved with the United to House L.A. campaign since the very beginning. We know we have a housing problem in Los Angeles. We know that even with the higher than normal salary, it's still difficult to be able to rent adequate housing in L.A., and buying is exponentially more out of reach for many. We are happy to have collected more than enough signatures to qualify this initiative and put it before the voters. It took lots of energy to collect signatures from all corners of the city, and we are ready to double down to get voter approval in November. Today, with your approval, we celebrate being on the ballot. Next step, we win in November.
Next speaker is Yuval Yusefi. Good morning. You're speaking on item twenty-six?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
My name is Yuval Yusefi. I'm a resident of CD five, and I am here in strong support of United to House L.A. If we want to deal with the homelessness crisis, we need to stop the inflow of our residents and neighbors into homelessness, and that's exactly what this measure would do, through income assistance, emergency rental assistance, and renter protection enforcement. This permanent funding will help over four hundred and seventy-five thousand renters stay in their home each and every year, and this is a transformative moment to change the face of housing and homelessness and affordability in Los Angeles. So we are strongly in support of United to House L.A., and thank you very much for your time.
Okay, that was the last speaker. So we're going to go ahead and close public comment. Members, let's go ahead and vote on items fifteen to twenty-three and item twenty-five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-four. There was a technical amendment introduced by Mr. Bonin and second by Mr. Krikorian. Let's go ahead and vote on that item as amended. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
And there's been a request by Mr. Bonin to send item twenty-four forthwith. Let's move on to item twenty-six. Let's vote on this as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, where are we now?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Mr. Lee, do you have an announcement? I believe you do.
Well, I just wanted to welcome the LEED 12 kids. It's a program that we started years ago. We offer it, uh, I think of around 20, 20 spots every semester, but we have hundreds of kids apply. These are the best of the best of CD12. As you can see, some of them, uh, usually we only take juniors or seniors, but as you can tell by the, one of the last speakers, we had to make an exception for her. She's in ninth grade and impressed us so much on the interviews. These kids, we, uh, take time to teach them about how the city works and to make sure that they are part of the, the political process and how important that is and also to encourage them to start their nonprofits with the, uh, help of our staff to help raise them the money, to do the things that they are trying to do and to help beautify and, um, all the amazing things that programs that they do in our community. So just wanted to welcome them and thank them for making the trek down here to City Hall.
Can we, can we have the students please stand up so we can recognize you? I'm very impressed with, um, your demeanor and your speaking abilities this morning. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Uh, any other presentations? Mr. O'Farrell, you have a presentation or an announcement, I should say?
Uh, an announcement and a bit of a presentation, Madam President. Thank you so much. I'm joined by Mr. Blumenfield today and I'm sure eventually by everyone around this horseshoe who knows, loves, and has worked with.
So, um, you actually have a perfect 20 today. 20 items on your agenda, 20 items with no community input. And I'm still trying to figure out why there has never been any community input on any of these items. I think the people in the communities ought to be able to speak up on some of these items. And these assessments for these lighting districts, some of them are so outrageous, people don't get any notice about any of these things and it's kinda tough, you don't get a notice about a hearing, to be able to attend. Um, number one says something about LA kids for parks and I'm trying to figure out why this item has money dedicated, dedicated to parks when you have a county proposition that was passed about four years ago that's supposed to supply money for parks and it's assessed on almost 1 million items, 1 million parcels in the city of Los Angeles. So where exactly is that money going? It doesn't seem to be, there's a lot of parks around. And whatever parks there are, they're filled with homeless people. And I'm trying to figure out why you don't impose the... I just was watching TV a couple nights ago and there was an ad on TV about LA Care. And that's one of the most important items in companies in LA because it deals with a corporation that had a contract with the County Department of Health Services and they signed up over 15,000 people for the Affordable Care Act. And there's an item on the county agenda, A8, refers to Mark Ridley Thomas wanting to do away with the Affordable Care Act. And how can he do that? It's his puppy. And he said no to his own project. And they signed up 15,000 people. And they took that goddamn money and they built that goddamn stadium in Las Vegas. And I was at this meeting in, in Los Angeles County SCAG meeting for Southern Calif, Southern, Southern section. And I said something about that and there was a lot of people came up to me and said, I should continue going on about Mark Ridley Thomas because it turns out he's the number one drug distributor in LA.
We're gonna reset your clock.
Oh, thank you. So again, I say, uh, if you go across the street and you look at Grand Park, they're celebrating 10 years anniversary of Grand Park. But Grand Park actually opened up in 1966. So that 10-year anniversary deals with the passage of the Grand Park building, the, the project they wanna do at Grand Park. And that building they're doing at the corner of Grand Avenue and, and First Street involves a lot of money that should be going to other projects. And it's, it's just this stuff that goes on between the county and the city and the state and metro. And the four levels of government is one too many. And I think they should have considered Jessica Law for mayor. I think she'd be a great candidate. First of all, she's a woman and she's been involved in a lot of stuff that involves downtown and how shitty it is around downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks, your time is up. Dr. K.R. Toothbake, you've signed up for general public comment in item 11 and 12.
And, and we're actually opening public comment on 11 and 12. So you have two minutes for the items and if you wish, a minute for general as well. So we'll set the clock for two minutes and when it buzzes, you can keep going if you want.
Thank you.
Another minute.
The EHV vouchers were given a couple months ago. 3,365 vouchers specifically to Los Angeles City, 1,955 vouchers for Los Angeles County. Only 117 of them were actually given. We asked that the city encourages Mario Sabalos and Belinda Allen, these two that were elected for the Housing Committee, for their impact statement to reflect the pushing of these EHV vouchers that have been in limbo. We have about 2,000 families in CD8 alone that have been registered for permanent housing and they were denied. So we're asking that the city step in to have Hackla accountable for the 3,000 vouchers that are still in the queue that are funded. We also ask that the city also send a letter of recommendation to LASSA to use the $570 million HAP3 funding specifically for these vouchers for those who are verified homeless. They do not wanna sleep in their cars any longer. Many of the families are in safe parking through Hopix and this program is not working. There's plenty of funding and plenty of buildings that are available, such as 515 South Crocker in Skid Row. So Kevin De Leon, we request that that building to be used for an emergency shelter uh, since the Union Rescue Midnight Mission and Los Angeles Mission are filled up, understaffed. The homeless population really needs support and they really need funding. So please, these recommendations that the grassroots organizations have been submitted to you, please fund them so that way we can alleviate the homeless crisis. This year, let's do it a different way this time, actually listen to the constituents, fund the requests that are submitted through the RFPs and discretionary funding so that way we can keep our safe streets. Uh, therefore, there's no cameras, no police. So what are we to do? Democrats, let's do better.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Dr. Tooth.
I still have some documents that I wanted to give to the... Can you hand them to the sergeant, please? And he'll make sure that we get them. Thank you. Next, any other adjourned motions? Seeing no other adjourned motions, our meeting is adjourned.